Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the work session of the Mayor Council for the Town of Berlin at 6:00 PM on Monday, July 10, 2023. This is a work session, so we'll do the standing and the pledge of allegiance in a few moments. This is to discuss Heron Park, so if Coastal Ventures Properties representatives can come to the table. We're going to begin the work session with an overview of the proposed project by Coastal Ventures Properties. We'll go into a discussion between Coastal Ventures Properties and the Mayor Council regarding the contract and any questions anybody has, and then we'll open that up to the public for anybody that would like to ask questions. All right, so Paul, Sandy, if you would like to start us off.
Good evening. How are you? Hope everyone's well. Each of you have a package in front of you, and I kind of thought it would be a great idea to kind of summarize where we've been for the last 24, maybe 30 months, if you will. So, and I don't know whether I should read this or just follow along, but the first part is how we got here. How did we get here? We got here because I'm a news junkie, and I started reading a lot of information in the local newspapers. And I was familiar with the Heron Park project from 20, 30 years ago because we did a lot of construction there. I know some of you have heard some of this before, but I think it's worth repeating because I think there's some concerns in the public that we've had a lot of secret-type meetings and things like that. So I was familiar with it. I was reading, following the articles. The town was doing a lot of listening as far as what ideas would be done for the project, and I was listening to it as well. I approached the town via the mayor, the plan and zoning, the town manager. That's what I do. This is a normal process. If you have an idea for a town, you typically want to go to the regulatory agencies to see if it's a hell yes, a hell no, or a maybe. I mean, that's kind of where we are in the development process. I had created some ideas. We have kind of imaged this off a project that we did in Easton where we did select demolition. It was a 200,000-square repurposed medical office building in Easton. Again, our end product here is not medical offices. So we proposed that, and as we looked into the project farther, we began to realize that, yes, this will work. I mean, there's areas of the project that's really bad disrepair. There's areas of the project that are worth repurposing. Did an onsite inspection. I'm on page two, item number five. We met with an architect to create some drawings to make sure that our concept would work. We suggested to the town our ideas. I am asking the town to single-source this, just like I'm doing a project in Talbot County right now, where we are the single-source developer for a project. We interviewed the town officials, and we asked for a single source. Mayor Zach said, "Well, I can't do a single source. I have to do RFP." So he went to the town council. The town council selected the process of submitting, putting it out on the street, or RFP. That was in 2021. After we responded in 2022, the process, we entered into, we had a meeting in this room where it seemed like the town was encouraged by our plan and not the other developers' plan. The town selected our plan. We went into a negotiating period. The mayor created a committee. We met with the committee, I think it was three times. We worked through the concepts, negotiated a price and other conditions and restrictions, all within the boundaries and the framework of our response to the RFP. The town extended the RFP one time for six months. The town created a draft contract. This is exactly where we're supposed to be in this process. We had not a quorum of city council members. We had a building committee, and we are exactly where we're supposed to be in this process. Nobody's done anything wrong as far as secret meetings, as far as conspiracies and things like that. I want to kind of quell that idea. Here's where we are today. So I've read on page two now. So there's been, we didn't come with these ideas just out of the clear blue sky. We came with the ideas and concepts that we can share with you again tonight to the public by reviewing the studies that are on the public town, the town's public website. These are not secrets. They're not mysteries. They're on the town website. So I'll just name them for a few. The Berlin Falls, and I have those. I have all the studies right here. Well, I have most of them here. The Berlin Falls Town Interpretive Plan. The Berlin Falls Park Building Condition Assessment. The Berlin Falls Park Lagoons. The Berlin Falls Park Concept Plans. The Tyson Phase One Final Report. The Tyson Phase Two Final Report. Tyson's Foods Environmental Summary Final. They ended up filing the RFP process. So all of this is right off the website of the Town of Berlin. We just didn't imagine our response to the RFP. So I'm now on page four of our little package, the demolition process. Now, you cut through a lot of this, but I think it's best to start by telling the story. You want a tree cut down in your yard. You go to a contractor and say, "I want the tree cut down." One contractor is at $500, and the other contractor is at $1,000. Well, what are you going to do? You're going to accept a low bid. You're going to accept the $500. Well, the contractor's finished. Oh, he's left it by the stump. You didn't say anything about the stump removal. So you have a tree that is now, and you have a stump. That's a lot less money than it is to remove it below grade. It's a lot more money to remove it below grade. So if you would invest the time to review page four, you will see that you have a lot of decisions to make if you go through the alternative processes of, well, we're just going to demolish parts of the building. Well, who's going to, I highlighted this. Ask yourself, who will be making that decision defining the scope of the demolition? This is important, how will the process be followed? Mary, please correct me if, I'm sorry, Paul, you're out here, but please correct me if I'm wrong. You have a lot of work to do just to put out a pricing process for the demolition. I think there's a lot of folks in the public that says, "Well, just go get a price on the demolition." It's not that quite easy. There's subsurface conditions. I can tell you there's structural foundations there. There's water, sewer, all kinds of issues below the grade, let alone whatever you do to raise it to, that's always an odd word, raise, to lower it, demolish it to what our scope is. So we have listened, we have listened to the public. We've listened to the public from the uses and all the different studies that you've had. You have tens of thousands of dollars of studies. We didn't just create this. We just, we looked at the studies and investigated them. I'm going to say 1,000 pages of studies. And I'm sure I'm sure much of this. So we're now at what we've listened to. This is what we've heard from the community. Would you like to share that with me?
No.
Okay. So I mean, I'm going to ramble through this real quick. This is on page five. Solar fields, EV charging stations, palmated garden, brace the arts visual performing palmers, skate park, entertainment venue, simple at first, lawn chairs, grass slopes, grow to 20 to 200 people, open spaces retain the north 44 acres, specialty shops, boutiques, incorporate pedestrian bike trail. Do not compromise downtown. That's incredibly important to me. Promote downtown from this location. You're going to have two locations to promote downtown. We're in, we're owning downtown. Agrotourism, educational. Is anybody having a kid on a field trip to a farm? This is what we want to bring to this community. Eaterys, that's in your RFP. There are people who don't want more restaurants? That's in your RFP. If you don't want it, then just take it out. But we think that a destination, eaterys, like someone mentioned the torpedo factory, that's one of my favorite locations to go to in Old Town Alexandria, Alexandria, sorry. That's one of my favorite places to go to. You have a choice of eaterys. We're going to build off of downtown, and downtown's going to build off of us. It's going to be a cooperative effort. Central Kitchen Catering. There's, Sandy, as you know, has been very involved in foodie tours, which are downtown Berlin, which is very popular. Central Kitchen Catering. Brewery. Think Evo or Dogfish Head, or think Burley Oak. One thing about breweries is they like to have neighbors of breweries. They like that. One is great, two is better, three is fantastic. Fitness Center. Pet-friendly pet park. Community Garden. Make income-producing and job-producing. Fewer Farms. I could spend a half an hour talking about Fewer Farms in Pablo San Lucas. This is a farm-to-table vision that you've really got to Google, Fewer Farms, just to get a feel for what this is. A museum. Art Gallery. Children's Theater. OC Art League, if desired. Mini golf. Wedding venue, large event space, rock climbing, ropes, walk, rope horse. Arcade. Park and ride rides downtown. Food trucks. Innovator Food Hub. Shared kitchen. Commissary Test Kitchen. Bike pedestrian trail along tracks. The confusing part of all this is all of those things are stuff that we want to incorporate, everything that you all want to incorporate. We share the same vision. I'm going to now ask my, if you wonder, Sandy's favorite course in high school or school was drama. So here we go.
So just to fill you in on the vision of my favorite parts of this project, the garden center vision, start with that. That gardening is my passion. So the Berlin Garden Center will offer refreshing alternative to the national chains. Will have personalized experience with locally grown, unique items that you won't find elsewhere. We've been inspired by places like How Sweet It Is, Lord's Landscaping in Delaware, and Village Greens. They're amazing garden centers. They're three of my happy places, and it broke my heart when Village Greens closed. We want to offer a diverse selection of plants, flowers, shrubs, trees, and gardening essentials sourced from local growers who share our commitment to sustainability and quality. We want to create a welcoming environment for guests with an interactive potting station where you can not only purchase pots, seeds, and plants, but you'll also be engaging in an immersive experience with knowledgeable staff who will guide you through the process and provide valuable insights into indigenous plants and their care. We want to offer educational opportunities, agritourism, which would be great for the local economy, workshops and classes while nurturing a sense of community. We want to create a community hub with a sense of connection and sharing among gardening enthusiasts. We want to host events such as plant swaps, guest speaker sessions, and seasonal celebrations to bring together locals who share a passion for gardening and a love for nature. We want to empower our guests through these educational opportunities and inspire them to cultivate their own green and happy spaces and a deeper appreciation for nature. Any questions? So the second part is the entertainment vision, the entertainment center vision. And we share the same goals as Berlin, the Berlin community, to create a small intimate entertainment venue. And through the RFP, our committee discussions and listening to the public input, we began envisioning and refining our concept. We believe in taking a gradual and organic approach, starting with crawling, then walking, then running as our community takes the project and runs with it. And to avoid any misconceptions, let's not use the word amphitheater anymore. It creates thoughts of larger venues like Merryweather Post Pavilion and the Freeman Stage. Our vision revolves around a smaller performing arts stage or entertainment venue similar in size to the stages at the Ocean Pines Yacht Club or OC Sunset Park down on South Division Street. These venues offer a casual atmosphere where guests can bring their own chairs and accommodate audiences ranging from 20 to 200 guests. And by the way, the OC Sunset Park is an alcohol-free property, and those performances are full of guests who enjoy listening to local acts. And we have recently experienced the magic of a small sold-out performance of Gilligan's Island, the Musical at OC Center for the Arts, which only accommodated 40 guests. It was a fabulous experience. We believe that the town, if interested, the Ocean City Art League could be an experienced and valuable asset, attracting live theater productions, including children's theater. We would like to create a venue to share these types of experiences, and we are also willing to donate that back, the stage and land back to the town when the town is ready.
I will say that the Gilligan's Island Musical for the OC Center for the Arts, the cast was reaching out when they had sold out in Ocean City. They were reaching out at least to be in Berlin, trying to find a place to be able to.
We have an established Worcester County venue that would love to be an extension here. So I want to talk about experiences on page seven now of our little package, and I want to try to express how we can jumpstart projects. This is from projects that we've actually done. I know I'm rushing because I know we have only an limited amount of time. The Salisbury Bandstand in downtown Salisbury City Park. The city of Salisbury was wallowing in their process. We decided to jump in there and finish the completion of the bandstand. We got a lot of community support. I went to Prince Street Elementary School, which is right down the street from the bandstand. We established a lot of community support. So it's like an $80,000 with donations to the community. That enabled the city of Salisbury to leverage a grant to complete the pedestrian bridge. The Regional Art Institute and Gallery. We donated 5,000 square foot of shelf space, which leveraged into a permanent 5,000 square foot finished art institute and gallery, one of the longest-term organized arts community in the state. The Root View Commons. We got a little bit frustrated with the city of Salisbury. We decided to go ahead and do the demolition, construct a river wall because they were all confused about the topographical changes. We went ahead and constructed it, donated it back to the city. We donated the gallery building in downtown Salisbury to Salisbury University. From that, that's now a community arts center and an entrepreneur center. Not only did we donate that, but it leveraged a $5 million grant from the Rommel family to create an entrepreneur center. Charles County Western Parkway in Waldorf, Maryland. We donated the lands that enabled them to help with their Western Parkway. The gateway building, we created a public walk-through with a lighted, secured, cambered, temperature-controlled, and elevator. We did the same thing just down the street with the gallery building with a public walkway. Valuation of Heron Park. I think there's a lot of discussion about valuation of Heron Park. So with that said, we can point to different valuations. In 2010, the fully functioning processing plant was listed for $1.9 million, and I've already shared that with you. Burley Oak made an offer of $150,000, I believe. That was according to the article in the paper here. That was in 2021. Shore Craft, I think, I may have the name wrong, offered $100,000. The town's appraisal for the three parcels in 2022, to the extent I understand, it was $1.7 million. Our offer to the town was $1.5 million to the town, for the town for the three parcels. We increased it to 1.7. It's important to understand that we pay for all demolition beyond the grant. We were estimating an additional $500,000 for our scope of demolition. The Natale proposal suggested 1.6, but the town pays for the demolition beyond that to get to the Natale's scope. Plaque that, this is the best one, this just happened, right next door in Plaque, that's Estat, State Department of Settlement Taxation, they sold that property for $120,000 an acre. There's no restrictions, except for zoning. There's no demolition. There's no environmental issues. You can't get a better comps than this. Risks to restrictions. I just spoke to Mr. Brogge just a few minutes ago. Sorry for calling you out. When you put development restrictions on a property, you lower the value of the property. This makes appraisers lower the value of the property, which in turn makes lenders lend less. We are seeking an investment of $12 to $15 million here on a high-risk development with a lot of restrictions as it currently stands right now. Town of Berlin, where do we go from here? I'm on page nine right now. Am I going up town time?
Sir.
Okay. So we, where do we go from here? As I've explained to some of the members of the public, this is the beginning of the process, not the end. We are now in full view of the public. We now have all the discussions in full view of the public. We have a lot of work to do. As I've mentioned to some people, one of the first things I have to do is a state highway traffic study. That can't even be done until school is in session, which has already been an impediment to the process, whether it's a city road or a private road or however. And I need the help from the city to engage what the uses are going to be and what the impact's going to be in the entrance. So we need to determine, we need to determine the entrances. So we have to create in the next two to four months, architectural drawings, civil engineering drawings, roof drawings, electrical engineering drawings, HVAC plumbing drawings, and plumbing engineering. We have to determine the entrances. We already know that we're going to be reduced from four entrances now to two entrances. Scheduled traffic study must be completed when school is in session and work with the state highway district. We have to update the environmental audits. The environmental audits that you all have done are great, and they're a great start, and there's no mystery there, but no lender's going to accept those until they're updated. These are old studies that you have. I have to spend tens of thousands of dollars to do this phase one and probably phase two environmental audits. Create a school order management plan. We have to engage in civil engineering so that we can comply with the current Maryland State requirements for quality and quantity of management plan. Create a scope of demolition. That's a wide-open question. Verify the utilities to sort of the property. What are we going to do? How are we going to plug it in? Seek lender financing. Seek a building from the Town of Berlin. As it turns out, we found out as we were into the process that our parking requirements don't meet the town code, so we're going to have to do a little bit more demolition, which results in a little bit less square footage. More public input along the way. We're wide open to this. Everything the public wants to do, we want to do. Incorporate, I've got stuff around Easton. I have a project we have in Easton. I have a rail spur there. I want to incorporate this next to the railroad. Hundreds of feet of rail spur. I want to bring those down here and incorporate this into the process. Please understand that rooftop units, HVAC, heat, ventilated air conditioning units, they're 27 to 40-week delivery. I can't, I can't plug it in until I have my rooftop stabilized climate control. We're investing a minimum of $50,000 to $100,000 in the next three to six months just to get approval on the project. This will create jobs and town revenue. This is a dynamic process, so whatever we present tonight, I guarantee you one thing, it will change as far as the scope of the world. Prospects. What's interesting is we got really excited about this project. We started meeting people on there as prospective tenants. What are the first two questions? Page nine. How much? When? Can't answer those anymore because this process has gone on for two years now. So I just want to conclude by saying that this is a personal project for Sandy and myself and our family. Please understand, this is really important because I was speaking to Jay Meredith about the whole Ocean City Boulevard. Please understand that federal and state grants support and fund projects when the town speaks with one voice. When you have, and there's a couple examples, right 30 miles to the west. Granting agencies do not get behind split leadership. Refer to the town road, the town amphitheater, entertainment venue, the skate park, the Old Ocean City Road main artery along that way. You have to speak as one voice because otherwise they don't have time for you. I'm just saying that. I know this firsthand. So I've attached in here the letter from the Art Institute. I've attached some fun photographs here. This is public art. This is, this attracts us. This was in Annapolis. Those pictures are two-dimensional. Those drawings, those paintings on the wall are two-dimensional. They're three-dimensional. I mean, we have to look seriously. This is what we want to incorporate. Sandy and I visit a lot of places and travel a lot. We want to incorporate this stuff into this town. This is the simple version of the, I think I included that, this is the simple version of a stage. We can start with that. We can keep this simple. So I think I, can you think of anything else we could add? Okay. So hopefully we stayed within the 25 minutes. This is really hard to keep a presentation that I could speak for another hour on with enthusiasm. 10 to 15 minutes.
And we're a couple of years through this process, so lots evolved, so that's understandable.
But the public and most of the town council is not for it.
Which is good, which is why I think you've done a very thorough job of going through everything. I'd like to open it up to my colleagues before we get into the contract. I would be able to ask any questions related to any of this information.
Yes, question please. You talked a lot about wanting to not hurt downtown.
Yeah.
And that's very important to all of us. And I've had, heard concerns over the, you know, last few weeks as more of this has come to light. How will, you know, more retail, in your mind, more retail, a restaurant, how will it not take people from downtown, in your mind?
Good question. This is, keep in mind, please understand that the resultant space out of this enclosed is 40,000 square feet. I have one potential user that doesn't impact anybody, that's 25,000 square feet. If you would remove some of the restrictions on this, I could get into, and I've tried to disclose this because I need some oxygen along the way, warehousing space. But I can say without question that the first thing that Sandy and I do is, whether it's in Cairns, France, or North Carolina, Asheville, the first thing we do is visit downtown. So we're very sensitive to that. I can't, but everybody's against everything. So what I'm trying to say to you is everything that we've listed as a use, there is someone who's opposed to it. This is, you all, we are following your guidelines to present to you a way to implement your guidelines. So restaurants, one of the things we were looking at is a central, I mean, one of the prospects that we talked to was a central, a large restaurant operator who wants a central kitchen, where they can prepare things ahead of time. So I don't know, I've challenged Councilmember Burrell to call us out on if we're hurting downtown. That's the last thing we want to do. This is not, we're not totally economically driven on this, so I don't know if I've given you that. But keep in mind that the Outlet Mall is hundreds of thousands of square feet. The center at Salisbury is a million square feet. We don't come anywhere close to approaching that. This is, this is something that can be very compatible, and the best part about this is one can lead to the other. In other words, they can, we can play off of each other, especially if we're able to leverage some of the pedestrian movement and bicycle movement to downtown. As an example, the railroad line goes right to our project at Berlin Main Place. Spiro Buas wants to put a hotel across the street. This couldn't get any better than a tourist attraction for a hotel to bring in people to go on a pedestrian trip. This is exactly what we do.
And when you visit any downtown area, if you go to a side street and you're shopping there first, you're always going to go back to the downtown. Nothing could ever replace a downtown in any hip little town.
How many businesses do you foresee out there? How many businesses?
Well, if you, if you kind of, this is hard to predict. My crystal ball doesn't go 10 years, and I don't think there's somebody who's talking about my heirs to my heirs or my heirs or whatever, but that being said, I'm thinking two to five years out. So how many businesses will this support? I mean, if you're talking about 1,000 square feet, obviously 40,000 square feet, that's 40, well, that's core factory. You're talking about 30 businesses. If you're talking about a central kitchen or another facility that we're talking about, you're only, now you're down to 10,000 square feet of space that we need to fill. I wish I could sit here and crystal ball exactly what we would like to see, but I can't. But I can tell you that right now, when the restrictions are imposed, we are in a box, and we're only allowed to do so many things. Eaterys is exactly what the town has asked for in their proposal. So if you don't want eaterys, you've got to let us know because that's what you're telling us to put in.
So that's what you were, I'm sorry, oh, this is my last one. At the last meeting, you said you were jello.
What?
At the last meeting, you said you were jello?
Yeah.
So how jello are you, as far as, you know, what you've heard from the community two weeks ago and what you're probably reading? You know, how jello are you as far as how much your tweets you're willing to make?
Are you asking for more restrictions? I don't know.
I'm not asking for more restrictions. I'm just trying to gauge on how open to working with members of the community are you on.
Well, I guess, I am, as a public person, sitting on different conventions and councils, I'm more of a public-oriented person than I am a not-public-oriented. So we are willing to listen, and Sandy suggested that if we're able to use the commentary next door and people want to have, chime in, but every, every comment that we've heard is exactly what we want to implement here in this project. I don't know how, I wish I could crystal ball this. I gave my kids, when I say my kids, the crystal ball.
So I just have a quick question. I was going to ask, I think it's 6:30, so I want to hear from the folks.
We still are going to go over the contract and stuff before we get to it up.
Okay, that'll be real quick. Just Ivy, I don't need to put you on the spot, but what does that, what does this proposal potentially do? Does it do anything for our downtown Main Street designation?
Absolutely not. It doesn't do anything to hurt our downtown Main Street designation. The Main Street designation stems from the culture of revitalizing historic buildings, bringing them back to life, and making them economically viable. I believe that the high tide raises all boats, if that's a term.
I love that.
And from the other downtowns that I've worked at, this subject has come up often where someone wants to develop and build a new shopping mall or even just one single restaurant across the road, and obviously, everybody is upset about that because nobody likes competition. But I don't believe in competition in that sense. I think that something like this and knowing that Gillis says that they, this would complement our downtown, not compete with our downtown. Nothing will ever replace historic Berlin downtown. People come to the downtown because they want to experience that small town feel. They're not going to go to somewhere else instead of downtown. Well, this will just make Berlin even bigger and better than it is right now. You know, I, I went a little above and beyond. I've been waiting to be able to voice my opinion on this and I don't think this is going to hurt the downtown at all. The way that we've been marketing the downtown for the residents and for tourists, there's something here for everyone. And this just makes Berlin even better. I, I don't think there's, it's gonna hurt the downtown at all. We will market it differently than we market the downtown.
With that being said, we're still seeing wait lists for folks wanting to come in and occupy spaces downtown. We're still seeing, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to summarize, we're still seeing businesses that are on the periphery wanting to move into those spaces that are closer to the town center. So, I mean, we were just at a ribbon cutting, Councilmember Worrice, Councilmember Green and myself, of a business doing just that, once on the periphery and trying to move in closer and refurbishing other sites, so.
Right. And you, I mean, Bern is doing really well over on that side of town. I mean, obviously Burley Oak does well. We've got the new distillery opening up. It's just, Berlin is just growing and what I love about it the most is infill development rather than expanding out of our town limits. The, the other thing is, I frequent that park also. And when we first purchased it, I've always thought that the front part of that property should have always been zone commercial, B1 or B2, and the back should have been called the park, not the entire property. I, I like the fact that we're keeping the park. There's a lot that we could do with the park, but those buildings, I mean, we've got a five hundred thousand dollar grant that we have to use this year, or it's not gonna look good if we have to give that money back. So I am a one hundred percent in favor of this, by the way.
I can assure you that our experience, I'm gonna say three million square feet of medical offices, that would be the first thing I would want to do. Everybody in this community said, you're not gonna be medical offices. We're not gonna be medical offices. I mean, that's an easy play for us. I mean, that's just easy. We want to, we want to do the pushups and the exercise. And I can assure you of one thing, that we will promote downtown from that location to the fullest extent possible. And it will draw people who otherwise wouldn't come to downtown to that location, who will now be seduced into coming to downtown.
Let me ask a question in a different way about downtown. Of course, Berlin has a lot of great restaurants. Everybody enjoys them and in close proximity of one another.
We're just in one point.
Sure. People eat when they walk the streets, do whatever, get an ice cream. You're proposing two, possibly two restaurants, large scale. So people are now gonna have to make a choice, do I eat downtown or do I eat over at your development? So if they eat at your development, that's taking one customer away from downtown. So my question is, do you think that a town the size of Berlin, which is a small town, can reach a saturation point of the number of restaurants it has to offer?
We have met with one of the restaurant operators in this town and that restaurant operator was in full support of our project. So, you know, in my opinion, as a tourist, and you know that tourism is probably one of the best economic multipliers of any development that there is, tourism, because they come, they spend money, they leave, they'll demand services. So we, we see, based on what we've done in our experience and visiting as a tourist, that when we go to Old Town Alexandria, there's more of a walk from the Heron Park to downtown than there is to the places that we experience dining opportunities. We go there, when we go there, and I can, I can name twenty more, but this might be where the torpedo factory is, it is where the torpedo factory is. We've seen that we, that's our destination. Berlin is our destination. We're gonna make a decision once we get there. And it might take the trolley, it might take a pedestrian way, it might take a bike. The train thing was really awesome. I thought it was pretty cool that I just saw a few days ago and the guys came up here and wanted to be a part of that. That's how you're gonna get around. And there's, might be a shuttle. I don't know the answers to these questions. I wish my crystal ball was that clear, but it's not. But we see it as a multiplier and we see the restaurant, again, your RFP requests eaterys. We're fulfilling what you all have asked us to do. So if it's wrong, then you need to change the, the direction and the goals. Everybody's gonna be against something, but we see that as a, as Ivy already has already said, a rising tide raises all boats. That's what we, how many restaurants are downtown Salisbury on your foodie tour?
About fourteen.
Fourteen. Nobody would ever imagine there are fourteen restaurants downtown Salisbury. When Sandy does her foodie tours downtown Berlin, she has to walk her, her tourists who are from all over the place on the street because the sidewalks are so busy.
Yeah, many times when it's crowded, yeah.
So, I mean, when she's doing foodie tours, we didn't come to this out of the clear blue sky. We came to this because we see what's happening in Berlin and we can make this property. My experience with construction in her, in the project and her experience in tourism, it's a natural. So I, that's along with the answer, sorry, check.
So one other question, it's kind of the awful question in the room. A lot of people believe there's chemicals in the ground. Now Troy Burnell, that I have a statement today saying when he purchased the property, he did phase one, phase two environmental assessment and they found absolutely no chemicals. Do you believe there are chemicals underground or if you, you would have to do a phase one, phase two as well? What happens if you find?
You all, I, I have all those studies, I named them in the little packet. You have a, you have a phase one environmental audit, you have a phase two environmental audit. These are no good to me. All I can do is update them because they're no good because they have, these studies have a shelf life, but nothing, there's been no contributing factor to this property since these studies were done. So there are some people who, by mention of my comments behind the stockade fence, I'm not referring to environmental issues behind the stockade fence. And I have the two thousand and six survey, which is all, which identifies some things. These are all structural concrete things that are behind the stockade fence. This is why we're budgeting five hundred thousand dollars more beyond what the town has to get the site clear and its ultimate development. So that's, that's on you guys. If you guys decide, number one, you've got to decide what scope of work to do as far as demolition goes. And number, that's number one. And number two, you've got to decide how you're gonna fund it. Because I can assure you, it's gonna cost more than.
I'm talking about chemicals in ground.
And all I'm trying to say is your two environmental audits that you all have, one of them is two hundred and thirty-five pages, one of them is six hundred and eleven pages. All I can say is, there, I, I review these studies, I think, I don't want to put Mary on the spot again, but the town has reviewed these studies. There's nothing there other than your oil spill that cost the town three hundred thousand dollars. Other than that spill, that's there that concerns me. But I have to update these environmental.
I understand that, but we're confident that there is.
I, I am reasonably confident there's nothing environmentally, that's a problem for our proposal.
But Jay, you said we have a crystal ball.
What she said?
You don't have a crystal ball.
Somebody's listening to me.
Are there any additional questions?
Okay. Let's take a look at the contract together if you don't mind. The, I believe this is the most up to date version that we have following the subcommittee's meetings. Councilmember Nair, Councilmember Worrice, correct if I'm wrong. One, the purchase price is here at one point seven million dollars. I know that we had discussed in the subcommittee, possibly earmarking two hundred thousand dollars of that funding, I believe a hundred thousand dollars was to be earmarked for the grant offset for the rails and trails. And then I believe another hundred thousand dollars was earmarked for the amphitheater, well, no, the entertainment venue, pardon me. And then that was to sunset after twenty-four months if both of those projects were not feasible. Is that correct?
And I, I don't think six months is realistic, twelve months would be.
Twenty-four, I thought we said.
Twenty-four, twelve. I think that's realistic.
Any, any comments or questions from the council regarding that?
And just to mention that we were willing to stand down on that, I, I can assure you that with that type of funding as a jumpstart, that's why we have page seven as a jumpstart to projects, that works. If it doesn't work, then it goes to the city rather than anyone.
How does this body feel? Anybody wanna say how they feel about that?
That's not currently in the contract.
No, it's not. It's, it's not in there.
Ivy would know.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
Just starting.
Just starting with the.
The discussions about the one point seven million dollar proposed purchase price and the a hundred thousand dollar earmark of that one point seven for rails and trails to offset the grant and then another hundred thousand dollars to offset or jumpstart the entertainment venue, fundraising. Both of those would sunset after twenty-four months if the projects were not viable. So I believe the question was, is that a good practice to like have funding available to be able to help get grants or other funding?
It's, it's great to leverage for grant funding. Public-private partnerships are always best for grant funding.
Anybody on here want to comment?
Well, it's not really a comment to that. I just want to make sure, Mary, you plan to go through all of this because we only have, I'd like to have folks to.
I was just trying to get some of our points that we wanted to, there were pinch points for the subcommittee to discuss with the mayor and council while we have everybody here. If we go a few minutes over, I think we can start our meeting at like seven fifteen, fifteen hours, I would imagine. We're still live, so people can follow along when we're going. Anybody wanna chime in about the purchase price discussion? Councilmember Worrice, Councilmember Nair, you were on the subcommittee.
I mean, I was, was always of the mindset, you know, we're asking one point seven, we should get one point seven and then the council wants to allocate that money, so.
I was thinking the same thing as Jay. I don't think we should muddy the waters of this contract with earmarks. If we're gonna get one point seven, that's what it should be. And, and, and we can decide upon the use of the one point seven at a later date. Excuse me, but I seem to be having, I'm getting a little hoarse.
We're okay with that. We've previously stated that.
Now, now, explain to me how the grant plays into this. You will provide the town with one point seven million dollars of purchase price and in the town grant will assist you in, in demolition, that building.
That's correct.
By the cash we're talking is one point seven.
That's correct.
I mean, I've heard from Dean, I've heard from Jay Jackson, I know you served on the committee, you wanna voice your thoughts on the one point seven and propose earmarks versus no.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just, I, I stand in agreement with Councilmember Nair with what we talked about, that the one point seven cash should be the one point seven cash. And then we can decide how we go with it.
Councilmember Nichols?
I've always said, in the, in any discussion, that whatever the price is, that needs to be the price. Don't include the demolition in the price. Or that the grant funding in the, in the overall price of one point seven is what we're talking, not one point two or one point five. That one point seven is the cash for, is the offer that you're putting on the table and the demolition is a separate amount.
And that is also, just so that you're aware, it's in contingencies, seller shall utilize DHCD demolition grant funds in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I see an error, but I'm saying that's, that's been my thought, but I wanted to make sure that while we're here, while these guys are here, we need to hear what they have to say. This, right here, as far as the contract is concerned, I'm content with what, what we'll say. But I want to hear what they have to say.
Yeah, I agree, one point seven million, I think we, and if other interested parties wanted to donate towards the entertainment venue, maybe their naming rights would be available to anyone that would put down some of the funds, so.
So, I'm sorry, I, I was wrong. There was something that was sticking in my throat and I wasn't gonna say it, but I'm gonna say it. So I know that you mentioned a few times, several times, that restaurants are in the RFP. It's in the RFP. There are a whole list of things that are on that RFP, not just restaurants. So for clarity, for anybody that's listening out there in listening world, when we were on that committee, because several of us were on that Heron Park committee, one, two, three, four, there's several out there as well, when we named this park and talked about all the possibilities, there were so many things that we were putting out there, but it wasn't that. And I want this to be clear to everybody out there too. Those type, we just threw out a bunch of things. Not that we were just throwing them on the wall, but who, what else would you like to see? What could be housed on this site? So it's not that we have to have any of these things, but these were all ideas and suggestions that as a group, because we met regularly for three years, came up with as ideas for the site. So it's not that restaurants have to be there, am I right when I say that? I'm looking behind you. Restaurants don't have to be, no, no, but these, but again, you did your homework because these are all things that we talked about back in twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, or what have you. So kudos for doing your homework. But restaurants are not the only thing on that list. I'm not saying we have to have any of these things, but I just wanted to say that part.
And to, to your point, we've been totally excluded from residential and we've been excluded from medical offices.
Well, those things weren't even on the list at all anyway. So, and amphitheater was our call. You didn't bring that up.
Entertainment venue.
So we said amphitheater and when we said it, we weren't thinking, big and whatever else. But we said amphitheater back when we were, what were we called back then? Berlin Falls or whatever.
Councilmember Worrice is firm on the fact that we don't call it an amphitheater.
For sure.
Sandy's, Sandy's firm on that too, just by the way.
The other point of clarity, Councilmember Nichols, you're right about the, all the ideas that we discussed that the, within the Berlin Falls advisory committee, but to Coastal Ventures Properties' point, the mayor and council did go through, I think Steve, you weren't here when we did it.
Yes, the RFP, I can.
But the RFP, we explicitly put eaterys in the RFP document.
But not only eaterys.
I'm just, I just wanted to clarify.
Just one question. Because I'm not familiar. I understand that the general consensus of the public and the council time was to go towards Coastal Ventures' proposal rather than Nattali's proposal because it was a single-family home community, quite frankly. But I did not take that to mean that there was to be no residential discussed. And then the subcommittee said no residential. Why?
Because it was our understanding, the three of us, from the public comment that we received, not just Nattali's proposal, but the public comment, the times that we discussed both proposals, that nobody wanted our, our residential there. Now, if this body sees an opportunity there, I'm sure that it will be something that Coastal Ventures Properties would want to explore.
Because my sense of that was just that it was mixed, mixed use, I'll say, versus residential. And it was more the mixed use sense because now it's, you know, it's burning property across the street, seventy, seventy single-family homes, it's worried me tremendously for sure, especially with the park property in back. I mean, I just, I don't know, I was, that's what bothered me all along. I was curious, what was entered was turned down? What did they want to do?
When they proposed doing Gardens House, which is a low-impact land use, we didn't want that two years later to come, get on townhomes or single-family homes, whatever. We wanted him to go the distance with that and make it work. So we put in a fifty-person, ten-year restriction now.
It's still ten, but there is a request that I'm seven.
But we wanted him to make a go of what he was proposing. So that's why there was non-residential restrictions.
But to that point, there's, I think there's opportunity to meet somewhere in the middle on some of that. And the proposals that were intended within the subcommittee were centered around workforce housing, I believe.
I mean, we're scratching the surface on this. We're okay with where it is right now with no residential. We did scratch the surface by saying, upon examination of the buildings and the structures, we could see an opportunity for, and, and some of our prospects of a place where a, a manager might live on site. We saw a possibility of two apartments, but the committee has nixed that and we're okay with that. So if there's, at some future date, we would have to go through the public process to change that.
Correct. Now, that's how it's been discussed.
That's where it is now.
Thank you. All right. So then some of the contingencies, I know everybody's talked about the, so still on page one of the draft contract, seller shall utilize the DHCD or the Department of Housing and Community Development. Wow. Demolition grant funds in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to meet the scope of the buyer's proposed project within the scope of the grant for the benefit of parcels fifty-seven, four-ten and one-ninety-one. Both funds must be expended by May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to ensure compliance with the grant term. So that's an important date to keep in mind. So that's an important date to keep in mind, May 31st, 2024. The rezonings on page one, I'm going to try and breeze through this. Councilmember Green and Ner, please, or Ner and Ores, please catch me if I miss a point. Page 2B talks about the parcel 57, which houses the, the old industrial building for following uses such as restaurants, critiques, gift shops, and retail for five years following the receipt of certificate of occupancy. Then it also talks about preclusion from residential use in perpetuity unless the seller, unless released by the seller, which is the town of Berlin, following a properly advertised public hearing. Then item 2F, yes, 2F on page two, buyer agrees that parcels 410 and 191 shall be limited to the use of a commercial and retail garden center for 10 years following the receipt of, of a certificate of occupancy from the seller, which is the town of Berlin. This is a point that the committee did not resolve. The town wanted 10 years for these two parcels, 410 and 191, for use as a garden center, and Coastal Ventures Properties had asked for a reduction to seven.
Why are we so focused to residential?
Councilmember Mary, to summarize it through, what, you want to go again?
Yeah, because I think, we like the idea of what you originally proposed, having a garden center there, not just a typical garden center, this was, lack of a better word, an enhanced garden center, like how sweet it is. So we wanted him to commit to that for 10 years and make it work for him before he even considered any kind of type of thing. Now, after 10 years, hey, it's not working, he can reevaluate it, reapply, but it's something different.
Councilmember Ner, I, I think that the zoning, you mentioned in item C that we would probably have...
Can you use the microphone, David, if you don't want?
Yeah.
Just for...
I think, I think that the zoning that you get on item C, because everything there is zoned R1 residential right now, and the reason for that, the annexation agreement, when we bought the property, we made everything R1 on these parcels, so that a park could be one of the permitted uses. 57 used to be a B, used to be a B2 parcel, and now we're talking about it going back to be a B2 parcel, which could allow dwelling units on the second or third floor if the building looked different. The parcel where you're talking about, the garden center, if you make it a B1 or a B2 like item C of this calls for, couldn't be residential. So I don't know that you need item E here, it might be redundant. If we, if we rezone the parcel for the garden center to B1 or B2, the only dwelling unit you could have would be apartments on the second or third floor of a, a ground floor retail business. So I, I don't know that you need to have item E, and, and I'm not, I'm not really sure, it's not redundant, we don't need...
I think the subcommittee had wanted that in there very clearly, so nobody was misunderstanding the intentions.
Well, I, there's a, there's a term in the zoning world, and I'm not trying to get in the middle of this, but it's called spot zoning, and you can't tell the owner, the new owner, Mr. Gillis, what he can do with his property, and it's been shown to be illegal all around the state of Maryland and...
Deed restrictions are not illegal.
May I comment on that? This is a deed restriction, not semi-restriction, so item F with 10 years, all we were asking for is, is...
Didn't mean deed.
10 years, please, just, please understand that when the real estate valuation company goes out there, they're going to lower the value of this and that inhibits our ability to borrow money. Please ask, I've, I've given you a list of people to ask to verify what I'm saying is true. So we were asking for seven years instead of 10 years as part of, we've agreed to the increased price, we've agreed to the use, we, our intent is to do the garden center, you've heard from Blair, we have a quality, who's or a quality business person that wants to open his business, so we were asking for seven years instead of 10.
So are you saying that seven years, for clarity?
It helps.
No, no, I'm saying that seven, seven years makes a difference in the banking, in the borrowing world, more so than 10 years, don't you think?
Being brutally honest, slightly different, slightly better.
Okay, so that's, that answers that question then?
Yes.
I think that's what everybody's...
Because it has a termination clause.
So, so the request for item 2F is from 10 years to seven years by Coastal Ventures Properties. Councilmember Ner, do you want to...
I'm fine with seven.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted it. Okay, so councilmember Ner would be okay with seven, councilmember Ores, sorry, I'm going to the subcommittee.
That's fine, I mean, I would be fine with seven, but I also want to point out that it is seven o'clock.
Does anybody have...
I would really like to get the input from the folks before we delve too far into the contract.
Yeah, we'll, we'll start that meeting a little later, folks can hop on and see that we're still in our work session, I think. Do you have the ability to comment on it, that we'll start a little bit later?
Yeah.
Thank you. The, so councilmember Ner and Ores are both open to seven, and anybody else, councilmember Nichols or...
I don't know if I'm perfectly open to seven, I want to hear what they have to say before I say yes to seven.
Councilmember Green?
I'm open to seven.
Councilwoman Burrow?
No, no, I disagree. I think, I can put this restriction on the bar, it is, tie his hands, but, but I'm against the, I'm against the whole thing. Let's just be, let's just be, I'm against the whole thing, but, but I understand this seller, what he's saying, putting these restrictions will kind of tie his hands to, to procure the necessary funding. So I am against this and the entire presentation.
Thank you. All right, so item G, 2G, the seller shall retain, which is the town of Berlin, the property to build and maintain a roadbed with a width of 60 feet from the designated entry point of Old Ocean City Boulevard to an entertainment venue and parking area, all of which shall be indicated on the site plan to be agreed upon by both parties in paragraph 2F, or 2A above. So this was a point that the subcommittee felt strongly about, and that was the town owning and maintaining the roadbed that led from Old Ocean City Boulevard back to the proposed entertainment venue and passive use park area. I believe, and councilmember Ner and Ores, correct me if I'm wrong, that we wanted wider sidewalks to be able to accommodate pedestrian, access, two-way traffic, utilities would be either over on the sidewalk portion of the roadbed or somewhere within that 60-foot right-of-way. And then we were thinking that the bicycle traffic would be more along the railroad that area where we would hopefully have a rails and trails network. Bikes could certainly use the sidewalks, but that would be the designated placement of that. Now, is anybody, that does come at a cost to the town, Ivy, I've asked her office to look into some potential grant funding that could be available for covering the cost or a portion of the cost of that roadbed. I don't want to tell you that we can certainly find a grant, but a project like this does put us in a more favorable position, and correct me Ivy if I'm wrong, for funding a roadbed like this.
Mayor, if I may, you know, I live downtown Salisbury a lot every day, and all the improvements they've made to their city streets have come from grants. They don't have that kind of money lying around the town of Salisbury. So what I'm suggesting to you, as I said earlier, when the town speaks as one voice, you're able to get a lot of grants from a lot of public entities, housing departments, state highway administrations. In the old days, it used to be intermodal transportation grants from the federal government. There's a lot of different grants that are out there, but we offered you a solution that we, in our original proposal, was to provide a public way to get to the 44 acres that the town contains ownership of and any potential entertainment venue that's out there. So we've offered you a, a bridge idea to consider. That was our original proposal, the road, the road, the public road came at a later date in the, in the...
So are you willing to think about doing the road?
I'm sorry?
So are you willing to think about doing the road?
No, and let me, let me say why. I don't need the utilities to go, the road is one thing, but you're talking about what's underground, like tree and tree stump. There's, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that go underground, I don't need any of that. And that's a question you need to ask yourself, in reflection on yourself. If I owned 44 acres of land, which the town would retain ownership of, 70% of the property, would you, do you want to extend water and sewer there? And, and what I mean by that is on A18, the town made a business decision to extend water and sewer under Route 50 for future development. That was, that was what, that's what towns do. I mean, they don't design a wastewater treatment plant for a million gallons when they only have 100 homes, they, they design it for the future. So you're designing it for the future, so that is a huge expense that doesn't even make economic sense for this project, for us.
But we would provide a public way.
Oh, yeah.
There's a difference between public way and...
Yeah, and, and we, we started off that way.
Yeah, I think, I have a real problem with 60-foot road. I, I just don't even understand that, I'm sorry, guys, I just, Henry's mill...
But the thought process behind that was that, an entertainment, just so you understand where the subcommittee's mind was, it doesn't mean that has to be the end-all deal, but the, the thought that went into it was that if we had an amphitheater or entertainment venue back there, or 40 acres of land that we don't know what we want to do with, we felt that it was better, the subcommittee felt that it was better to, one, own that roadbed, two, make it look consistent with existing infrastructure that we have throughout town, and accommodate that pedestrian flow that could potentially exist.
We offered a bridge solution that we will plat the land, and at some future date, if you decide you want a public way or a public road, you know, a public road, excuse me, then you can do that. I mean, it, it doesn't get any easier than that, and we'll just...
It was one of the pinch points for the group, because the, the subcommittee wanted the town to do, Coastal Ventures Properties did propose the access that they're talking about this year.
And the same thing for the entertainment venue, I mean, we're, we're okay with all of this, it's all, I hate to say it's have your cake and eat it too, but if you plat the property, I'm not even sure that, that all the amount of work, the month's worth of work that we went into delineating that roadway, I'm not even sure that's the roadway that either one of us wants. But that being said, we will agree to dedicate the lands for that public road, depending on what, depending on what you get a grant, whether or not you want it, whether or not you see the value of it, I mean, that's a, that's a business decision the town is making.
And with that being said, how does this...
Maybe I'm blinded here, because I feel we've got enough roads in Berlin that we could barely, that we are having a hard time with already. I don't want this road, that's just me. I don't want this road because we've got roads that we need to work on, that are already issued, so I can't, I can't honestly say yes to this when there are others that need work right now, so.
We offered a bridge, a bridge idea to, to have it all, have it both ways. We are, in our original proposal, we had a public way to get to the 44 acres, exactly like you have now, no difference. If you all want to have a public street at some future date, I suggested 10 years, then, then we'll set the land aside and dedicate it to the town. It doesn't get, I don't think it gets any easier than that, but that's your all's decision.
And also, keep in mind, we did, the subcommittee was thinking water, sewer, and electric servicing back to those, the 44 acres of the town has, including the entertainment venue, that's where the, the idea, and I understand the cost side, but just so that you understand, we wanted some of that infrastructure as well. Councilmember Ner, councilmember Ores, any feeling?
I think it's, I think it's worth exploring, I don't think you're going to decide now, I think it's worth exploring what you said, revisiting that.
I don't.
Building this, this road is a very expensive proposition.
If it came with the deal, it would be, it would be something different, et cetera.
This Henry's mill drive is 40 feet, I measured this morning, just curiosity, that's pretty wide, you guys that live back there, grassy knoll and then sidewalks on both sides, it's a large road, that's all.
And, and to that point, it does impact our parking, which actually, as we start complying with the code.
We were originally at 100. We were originally at 100.
So with that said, that means, that means more demolition.
And part of that, Steve, too, when you look at the width, right, part of that was we didn't know where we wanted to put the water and sewer and electric, so we wanted to potentially eliminate the idea that we would be tearing up the street or a sidewalk to do any repairs. So some of that work was done, and the street was designed in conjunction with our electric utility and water resources utility, as well as DVF, to help accommodate future improvements to make it a little bit more economical, so.
Steve, did you measure road edge to road edge, or did you measure sidewalk?
Sidewalk to sidewalk, so over there, it's a sidewalk, old grassy knoll, and then the road, yeah, and then...
But that is consistent with the neighborhood too, like, over in the Grand Grace Nelson, when the town redid that area, they did get the sidewalk, the grass, and then the road bed.
Yeah, that's beautiful, I just think that that's probably why it's going to be the person.
Very expensive.
Okay, so, councilmember Nichols was a, a little bit more in favor of the CVP, Coastal Ventures Properties Road, councilmember Ner expressed possibly revisiting.
I think we should revisit, I'm just, whenever we get my request to hear from the folks.
Yes, because I mean, it is 707, I'm not being disrespectful, it is 707.
Councilmember Burrow, you want to opine, or, pardon, I said, do you want to provide an opinion? No, no, okay, councilmember Green?
On hearing from them or the road?
The road, we want to hear from them.
I would prefer the, the verge of venture, venture.
It's a 60-foot highway, take a highway. All right, any more points, councilmember Ner and Ores, you both have seen this quite a bit as well, anything on page two that stands out that we should touch on?
I think you've covered the main just a bit.
I think everything else is kind of standard stuff after that.
It's kind of...
I agree. Anything that we've missed, Homer, Sandy?
I, I think you've covered it, as far as the scope of it. Again, just to emphasize, this is where we wanted to be this evening, this, but not, this is not a secret conspiracy, this is just the way it goes in a community.
Thank you. Now, what we'll do is, you two want to take a step back into your seats, so, and off the table and the microphone for anybody that would like to come forward, and then if we have questions that you're better fit to answer, we'll let you do that. All right, so at this point, we'll open it up to public comment regarding the discussion this evening in reference to Herring Park and Coastal Ventures Properties' proposal. Anybody that would like to approach the mayor and council, please go forward, name, street name, and we assume that the topic of discussion is Herring Park.
Good evening, Gina Belong, in Chatham, Maryland, Maryland. Ms. Nichols had brought, excuse me, councilmember Nichols brought up last time...
I don't bother me, keep their word.
...and bought the, the money price. What we bought, what I'm not seeing anywhere and what has not been mentioned is, number one, this was not purchased for the purpose of an operating plan, however, that's what we paid for. So this was actually bought in 2000, it was closed in 2003, purchased by Troy Purnell in 2005, annexed in 2009 for the purpose of EDUs. I'm not sure exactly when Troy listed it for sale, but all throughout the article through the Bay Side Gazette, it was mixed use in the amphitheater, it would be great, it was a commercial property, that's what it was known as, that's what it was appraised at. So when we bought that $2.5 million property in 2016, we paid an appraised commercial price, to which then we used the purpose of a park, knowing that a park had to be residential. We literally overpaid for, for land, knowing we were going to switch the zoning. Also in 2003, 191 keeps being clumped with these three parcels that we purchased from Troy. 191 was purchased in 2003 in the peak market, and we paid $275,000 for that commercial. So this land has cost us $2,775,000 for an amphitheater. After that, based on the information that you were provided on the Facebook page and the appraisal that I did go through, all of these lots, 52, 57, and 410 are still being raised, were appraised as residential lots. 191 is the only one who maintained its current one, it's also the one at 130,000 a acre. an acre. Fifty-two, we don't want to get rid of it. But even based on that, on the 1.7, we are still not, we, we are guaranteed that these are going to be commercial lots. We've already said it a thousand times here. We are ripping ourselves off. Even if you did it and at a low ball value of a commercial lot at a hundred thousand per acre, that is still brings the, and you bring the appraised size of 191, that's $2,74,000. It's a $575,000 difference. So this town purchased this property based on it being zen commercial, and now we are going around, we're going to appraise it at residential and flip it and pay that price, sell it for that price, and then we're going to turn around and flip it to B2. Again, I cannot figure out what business school all of you went to. You guys are so intelligent, and this is one-on-one basic business. We are literally buying high and selling low.
Yes.
And it's ludicrous. The town, just on the overpayment of the land value with the cleanup costs, we have lost 1.12 million. Now we're selling it as residential, required to stay that way for ten years. We are losing at least $600,000 on just that premise. This property will have us a total of $1,720,000 in the hole, which is purchases and sales because we're not following basic business principles. Is there a clause in this contract that says Mr. Gillis cannot flip this property if it doesn't work out for him? Because he's got guaranteed B2 zoning. If he decides this doesn't work, he doesn't need to get his money back from you because he can literally relist it and take six to eight hundred thousand by having it all be two zoning. This isn't an attack on Mr. Gillis. This is a reminder that Berlin does not have a great track record when it comes to land deals and developers. This is not hard math. Thank you for your time.
Wait, Gina, I have a question. Yeah, so I have a question.
Yes, sir.
That was a lot of numbers.
Yes, it was.
So, according to your calculations and your data, what was your supposed to be sales price?
Even if you did it, and this is just being modest on that, you base the parcel 191, which is currently zoning B2, the parcels fifty-seven and four-ten, including, which is totaling 18.74 acres, should be considered more valuable as they cannot be used as residential. You've already put the clause in there. It has to be commercial. Even a modest increase of a hundred thousand an acre, that is 1.1, 1,874,000, and then adding in the correctly appraised parcel 191 to the total to 2,74,000, which is a difference of 575,000 in what we are currently being offered.
And Gina, what do you want to see done to this property? What do you want the property to be?
What I would like is us not to continue making stupid mistakes. Okay? We overpaid for it because we paid for it as commercial. We know it's going to be commercial, but we're selling it as residential. I mean, this is just basics. What we need to do is what I honestly think what Councilman Nerr said. We need to put some brakes on. We need to be smart about this. This, this is a wonderful idea. You know, Troy Purnell brought up the amphitheater when he first listed the property for 2.7 million. So, yeah, it's a great idea, but we're not there yet. We have roads. We have infrastructure that needs to be fit. This thing has already cost us. By selling it, it's going to cost us more. And then we have the soft cost, the road cost, the sewer cost. This is ludicrous.
Right, so I'm totally.
Tear down the building, zone it how it needs to be zoned.
So we're up here to take Arabs, right? And that's fine. But just, let's hear a proposal.
A proposal is to do what Councilman Nerr said.
Do you want it to be homes? I think that's right.
I think a mixed use would be great.
I'm just trying to get an idea on what it is.
A mixed use where you can have homes, maybe you can have a zoning where you have commercial, like you're doing on the, uh, what is it? Uh, German, Germantown Road?
Yes.
Where you, you're going to have a mixture of homes and businesses and all that. You can still make your car. But we have to get over this notion of this is some great thing. We don't know what's in the bottom of those ponds. You may not have chemicals in the ground because you're not digging in the ground. But those ponds were waste management for the chicken plant. They were fined in ninety-eight for dumping chickens and all the waste. They were fined millions. You start digging into those grounds and you're going to find issues. I say we tear down the building, figure out what needs to be done, and then zone it properly, whether it's mix of the business and residential, but this, this holding back him with partial residential and, it's ludicrous. This is all just not even, I would have flunked. I would have never gotten a degree if I operated business like this town is doing right now.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How do you propose that we pay for the additional costs of demolition if we demo ourselves?
Well, you're proposing on building a sixty-foot road? You're probably going to pay for that.
But what I'm asking is, is there's an option for us to not build a road if that's something the town doesn't want to do. But if we choose to want to maintain our roadway and put infrastructure in, that's one thing, we have to, we have to handle that. If we don't want those things, then there's an option for that. But if we choose to demo the building ourselves, to get it to a point where somebody else can develop that property, how should we pay for that additional cost?
But we don't even know what those costs are.
Right.
Exactly. You haven't, you haven't even done a proper appraisal. The appraisal was based on a residential lot, and it's actually expired itself because it had a term.
I'm talking about parcel fifty-two. I'm saying that the Tyson bill needs to be demoed to $500,000.
Yes.
That I don't think is going to touch the concrete slab or anything that's going to be needed to get it to great, to billable. So how do we pay for that additional cost? The subcommittee's talked about it, and that would come out of taxpayer coffers. So.
It already has been.
But I mean, I'm, I'm saying to you that that comes at additional cost. Is that what you're saying that you support?
What I am saying that we support is we are sitting here rushing into something and once again, losing money. If you want to sell it and you're going to force someone to do B2 zoning, not mixed use or anything else, then you, you sell it as a B2 property. You don't sell it as residential. We bought it as a B2. Now we're selling it as residential. That's $2 million that you've taken out of the taxpayer of selling. I don't know that another 500,000 is going to kill us at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else wish to address the mayor? We'll get to everybody, so it's, we'll take as long as it takes. So whoever wants to come forward, name and street name, please. Can, uh, Kelsey, can you do me a favor? Can you open that other door?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I have a general comment today.
Name, street name.
Connie Ham, Powell Circle. I have a general comment today, and I hope this is the right place for it. Was I supposed to wait for the next meeting, or?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Is it in reference to Heron Park?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that's perfect.
Use your microphone.
Okay, there we go. First of all, I'd like to make one statement before talking about Heron Park. I am against holding a general election to decide on the sale of the land to Coastal Ventures. This is a terrible precedent for future legislating. I want and expect my elected officials to make these decisions. That's what I elected you for. Also, referendums, and that's which, what this would be, can end up being neighbor against neighbor. Now regarding Heron Park property, we need to put money towards hiring a professional organization to help us make these decisions about the property. Architects, city planners, et cetera. We need to use the property to offset the debt and the cost of the debt. You are asking some of the same people that allowed us to go through to now fix it. This project is over the heads of everyone in this town, including me. Something would have been done by now if folks were up to the task. And now we, as a public, are expected to have answers and resolve, resolve this mess. This is too much for us. With that said, I will offer my ideas and thoughts on what to do with property. The property needs to work to create a meaningful revenue to help offset the debt and the cost of the debt of the purchase of the property. The debt is hurting the town. It creates opportunities for others to impose their own agendas and special interests. Now, the park portion of Heron Park, the land over the rise and the ponds, except for a few needs, should be left alone. The park is an important path for migratory birds and a wetlands rich with wildlife. It's a path for walkers, runners, birders, cyclists, families, et cetera. The needs at this point are the removal of invasive vegetation, and I recommend partnering with the state or another entity to obtain grants to do this work. The work is beyond our local public works department. One of the small ponds is currently covered with green algae, and that should be removed, and there should be the planting of additional trees, and over time, trails could be added. But as it is, it's fine. It is lovely, and it's beautiful, and it's teeming with wildlife. The three parcels of land should be used to create meaningful revenue for the town to compensate for the debt and the cost of the debt. We cannot pass this on down to the next generation. Regarding the current contract, I think the land is more valuable than what is being offered here. And we just heard somebody back that up. Uh, I didn't realize this was, I'm saying, the, well, the restaurant being offered here looks like more of the same of what we already have, with a great deal of outdoor dining. I don't see this project adding anything to the town. I think we can do better and get more for our land, and we need to. This end of town and Heron Park itself needs people. I propose the development of ownership, multifamily housing, one, two, three-bedroom condos, studios, lots, et cetera, affordable homes that people could own. I envision a development that backs up to the railroad tracks with balconies on the bath and looked out over the trees and the railroad tracks. The project could absolutely fit into the historic heritage of Berlin, borrowing from vernacular architecture of the older resort apartment buildings of Old Ocean City, for example. To live in Berlin, one must be able to afford a single-family home or rent, throwing your hard-earned income away each month. We can offer young people, people of color, low-income earners, and others an opportunity to enter home ownership and set them on a path of building wealth in this town and on this side of 113. This would be housing for our police officers, E M T workers, schoolteachers, therapists, PAs, and other workers that often have to leave the town, county, or state to find affordable homes to purchase. The best way in this country for an ordinary citizen to build wealth is by owning a home. This is an opportunity for retail component as well. We do not have too many restaurants in Berlin, but rather too many of the same type. How about food from other cultures with a variety of smells and flavors? Now, these developments could have covenants built into the projects that stipulate, for example, the condos be owner-occupied, targeting folks that work in Berlin. The retail could have covenants as well, et cetera, side options for people of color in order to bring in businesses owned by minorities. I've heard that any development would take business away from downtown. I don't believe this to be true. The Heron Park property is less than a mile from downtown, and with signage, landscaping, hardscaping, advertising, there should be a way to link the two ends together. Also, if a formal bike walking path could be established from Main Street that cuts through the dog food plant area and crosses Old Ocean City Boulevard, connecting, connecting up to Heron Park, this would go a long way to connecting these two areas of town. So in summary, reject the offers for purchase of the parcels, but in their current form, the land is worth more. Hire a planning architectural practice to assist in the decisions regarding the parcels. Leave the park alone for now in its current state, except for the green algae and the invasive vegetation, and bring in multifamily, affordable housing, and retail on the parcels. Providing a path forward for homeownership of black and brown residents on the west side of 113 is a long missed opportunity. We have one here. Let's go for it. Thank you.
Up, up next, just come forward, name and street name, please.
Roger Fitzgerald from Powell Circle. I've been on the Heron Park Committee since it started, all the way until it ended. We have had just, I think, probably said, eight outside plans that look like Columbia, this and that. To me, we issued an R F D, the town selected down a person for the R F D. Let's do it. We could just wait forever and talk about the perfect opportunity that would come along, and that plan will still sit there. The motion was made and passed at the Heron Park Committee to demo the plant. If it costs more, this proposal has a way to handle that. So to me, I'm here to speak in favor of the proposal. Let's do it. Let's not wait. Let's not wave our hands about some pie in the sky housing development. If ten other people are pouncing.
Thank you, Adam. Anyone else that would like to approach the mayor council regarding the discussion items this evening? Just come forward, name and street name, please.
Marie Belong, West Street. Um, two things. When does the road have to be done?
It depends on which option we take. So the.
So if we went with the, the plan as it is, when would the road be done?
But in the draft contract that's in the packet, if you look at item, uh, it's on page two, uh, item G, uh, that's what the town had of the road. Coastal Ventures Properties has asked for that as soon as possible. We've asked, we've put some deadlines on when they need to start construction, things like that. So we would begin with the town owning the road and who's going to construct it. We'd begin applying for grants and stuff as soon as possible. Um, if Coastal Ventures Properties, the other alternative, maintain the right-of-way to the passive use or the trail area, that would be done within those same deadlines. So I hope that answers it.
It does. Um, I just wonder where that money would come from if you don't get the grants.
Well, I, I wouldn't even promise you that we could get the grants. I would say to approach it with the mindset that it's coming out of the public tax funds with the idea that it puts us in a pretty favorable position for grant funding, but it's not guaranteed. It's grant funded.
We didn't have the money this year. Where are you getting the money from?
What, what are we talking about?
The road.
For the road?
Uh huh.
It would come probably from the proceeds of the sale with the town owning the road.
So that's not going towards the debt at all?
Well, there's two, there's a couple options, and the subcommittee was even divided on that as well, and you can see that with the group discussion this evening. We don't really know what avenue. But if the town was going to fund the road, you're right, we didn't have the funding in this year's budget, and I'd be good next year's budget without the proceeds of the sale. Now, if we use the grant funds, it would probably have a match component, which we would utilize. Um, but then the Coastal Ventures Properties idea of a town right-of-way back to their parcels would not use any of that 1.7. So it's kind of whatever pathway we all choose when we move forward.
Well, I'm not in favor of the road, and I think Steve is right. I think sixty-foot road with its huge, that, that's a dream. That's not.
But it's all draft format right now. This is all draft. Uh, I think Palmer's word was Jello. Sixty-foot is what we had discussed.
Yeah, but you're asking us to make decisions on Jello then. That's ridiculous. We can't do that. You are presenting a plan that we are saying, I'm saying no to, personally. I want a plan that pays off the debt of that. I don't care what you get in there. To me, it should be solar. It could be a solar field. You could use all that for that, take down our electric costs, and sell it. Or, I read you had a third option with Palmer, to buy the whole thing. We never heard anything about that. To me, that thing has been nothing but trouble. I'm sorry you guys wasted three years of your time on it, but migratory birds will still come there, whether we own it or not. Let Worcester County own it. Let the state own it. Why do we have to foot the bill for that? That's, that's one thing. Then, as to, uh, the restaurants and people waiting to be put in, if you put in more restaurants, are you going to have a waitlist then? Are you going to have a lack of people to fill what you have? You know, but to me, just because you have a waitlist doesn't mean that there's an overabundance of rental spaces. Just means that right now, we are the end place to be. What happens if we are not? And that's what you have to, as people start looking at, and you don't. You have these wonderful ideas. We are not Salisbury. We do not have the population of Salisbury.
We are not Salisbury. We do not have the population of Salisbury to be looking at these kinds of things. We are 5,000 people possibly. Salisbury is what, 20, 30, 50? It's not comparable. So stop doing that. That's where all of this goes wrong. You have too many big ideas. I feel like I'm in a Hallmark movie. That's what it's getting like and it's no reason to.
Ms. Marie, I think that's the first time I've seen you smile on this before. I gotta talk about the Hallmark movies a little bit more.
I don't like Hallmark movies.
I could have told you.
And I'm getting tired of being in one.
And Marie, that was my point. When do we reach the saturation point?
Pardon?
When do we reach the saturation point?
That's what we don't seem to understand. And you can keep talking about building, but I thought we didn't want that. I thought we would pay $20,000 for some man to come and tell us. So what are we doing? And that's what I look at. I look at that property. It had 650 employees. You're not getting that back. And they had benefits and good paying jobs. That's what should go on that property. No more retail, restaurants, all that. We have enough of that. Get us some good jobs. That's what economic development is for. And that's getting to that of Hallmark.
I like the smiles. I'll take it. All right. Anyone else that would like to approach the mayor and council regarding Heron Park? Just name and street name, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Doug Parks, seven Baker Street. And I'm not going to speak on the matter that you just mentioned. But I have a matter that I wanted to bring to the council and I thought I could take this opportunity to do it. The property next door to me, nine Baker Street, was the location of the Runaway Bride movie. The fence that surrounds that property was constructed by a movie company. And it is in very poor condition. The owner of the property is considering having it taken down. I think that it would be an item that would be a town benefit to retain that fence. It could be marked as a memorial to the movie, which was a major event at the time it occurred. And I would really like the town to consider renovation of that fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like us to have Dave take a look at the structural integrity? Are you concerned about that part? Dave Engelhardt?
Well, of course.
Of course. I think you know one another pretty well, so.
I know where he is.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council regarding Heron Park or any other matter of this? Just come forward, name and street name, please.
Ron Tasio, Walla Hill. I just have a question. We just recently discussed changing the 10-year plan to a seven. Do you guys understand what you're doing? What are you withholding by 10 years? What are you, what's your reasoning for that withholding of that ability to resume?
The subcommittee's discussion on that and council member Mary, council member Horace, correct if I'm wrong, but the goal for the growth restrictions, not just the portion for parcel 410 and 191, but also the item D, five years for retail gift shops, restaurants and boutiques, was to isolate the use and ensure that the developer would try to follow through with those for that period of time.
Okay, particularly on, I think, 410. It's 410 and one to the east.
410, yes.
So it's the garden center.
It's the garden center.
You know, what was your reasoning for restricting the zoning on that property?
If I have anything else, do you want to elaborate? Do you want to miss?
I think it was like what we already explained. When Palmer proposed, you know, the development of this parcel, he proposed the garden center and he was committed to making it work in Berlin. He said, you know, I can make it work for a minimum of 10 years. And so we wanted to hold him to that.
And then he wants to do it in seven years or less and the bank wants to do it once a shorter term. Why would the bank want a short term one?
I find it...
Yeah, I think the answer is because the bank can't wait till he upzones it and rezones it and then the property becomes way more valuable, which we just gave him on a residential zoning.
Ron, are you speaking as Ron or the planning commission, right?
Ron. Ron Tasio. Yeah, all right, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council regarding Heron Park?
Please keep in mind, there's also a meeting tomorrow night. Parks Commission, 5:30. Planning Commission on Wednesday, 5:30. Both agendas include this item as well. Probably not to this extent, which is why we wanted to have that. But both of those will have the opportunity for public comment.
Mayor, can we ask the individual bodies to take a vote and let us know what their feelings are?
As far as ours?
No, not us. The planning commission and the parks commission.
We're uncertain.
Ask them to take a straw poll of what their recommendation is to provide to us.
I think you wanted a report for this committee.
Yes, we did. I'm waiting for that report.
I was under the impression that a vote might not be part of that report. I don't want to vote.
But then it's hard to do this.
Yeah.
Could we respond to some of the public comments? I think 120 seconds.
Hold on one second. Let's hear it.
There's some questions that need to be answered.
We're not done with our report session yet. Councilmember Green?
Councilmember Green, can I just say one thing? Without it being an active agenda item, it's a discussion item. There won't be a motion or a vote of the planning commission. We certainly give you a report that...
And we've never even voted on it, Steve.
Which would be just like minutes, you know, and you would know that planning commissioner Tasio said this during the meeting.
So can you get a group consensus? Can you get a group consensus then, whether or not you want?
I'm just asking for a consensus. We have been told that the majority of the planning commission is opposed to it. I've been actually given that. That's not the case.
I've not heard that.
No, I heard that here two weeks ago.
I'll tell you. I can now.
No, but now you're talking about in a public meeting or not, Ron. Are you talking in a meeting that I could say that has not happened?
No, not in a public meeting. No.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm out.
So I think if I may, when it was talked about, a report from the Parks and the Planning Commission, like minutes, but some sort of, my envision was some sort of guidance from that group because we rely on the Parks and the planning to advise us, whatever their recommendations of whatever they're talking about are. So, I mean, I would be fine, I was thinking maybe just a two-page report and of the discussion. Maybe a committee recommendation might be.
But it hasn't been before them before.
You figure this is the first time they've ever seen it.
Except as taxpayers, it's not been brought before them at all.
And we've talked about it for years. I think that's a lot to ask of the group.
Then I will, a report is fine, just to report your discussion in the minutes. For me, for me.
Just the tenure of the discussion.
Just the, yes, just the mood of the room would be fine. I feel like you're just...
This is an important part of the talking process.
Let's look this up. Just as an FYI, it's 7:40. We will wrap this up by eight o'clock so that we can get into our normal business. But Coastal Ventures Properties wants to address a few things. And I do have a...
Palmer's saying, Dill, it's just a couple of...
But all of once I can ask, before you do that, there were two points that I forgot to ask you about and I made a note that I wanted to ask you about these before you finished. On page nine of the first document that you reviewed with us, it's titled "Mound of Berlin, Heron Park, Where Do We Go From Here in the Future?" The incorporate Easton rail spurs, can you explain that? And can you also explain, you mentioned item 14, which is create town revenue. I think what we haven't talked about a lot here is that in a public capacity, these parcels do not produce any tax revenue. In a private capacity, that changes. And whatever is built there is then assessed at the tax base. So talk a little bit about what you mean by town revenue as well as what we could potentially see in town taxes as it relates to it.
Well, what I see that the town owns is a liability. And that could be whether it's demolition costs that will way exceed the grant or the potential that some people feel environmental or the lack of creation of jobs or lack of creation of tax revenue or job production. I don't know if that addresses that.
Well, in your, in the submission to the RFP, and it's been a little while, you ballparked a number associated with annual tax base of that property.
I used the tax revenue for Berlin main place, which I had, which was about a dollar a square foot for the town, not Worcester County and the town. A dollar, these are arbitrary numbers. There's no science based on this. So right off the bat, you also have business licensing and the other sources of revenue on that. So from what we're seeing, we would see some of the...
This is a ballpark.
There's someone who's going to correct me because whatever I say is probably going to be wrong. It's got to be $40,000 to $100,000 a year of tax revenue that you generate.
I want to say we said 80.
Well, okay, so that's in the range of that. So I don't know. I'm guessing. I'm spitballing, as they say. When you're asking me the other question about, I mean, we're doing a very great project for the Talbot County in Easton and that happened to be a rail spur. Well, this is, this is next to a rail line. We see rail spurs as traffic calming devices. So we were going to incorporate it into the road beds of where, areas where we want traffic calming, just as a synthetic, if you will, railroad crossing. And so they're sitting up there now and I need a place to put them.
Thank you. And then if you wanted to address that?
Yeah, just a couple of more questions. It doesn't get any better when you're trying to establish value as to what a property transfers for. So I've heard everybody talk about, everybody's property is worth more in their opinion than what the market will bear. That being said, it doesn't get any clearer than contiguous property, plaque that, that purchased their property for $120,000 without any demolition, without any environmental, without any restrictions per acre. It doesn't get any clearer than that. So I can't tell you how many sources to go to to establish value. We've outlined a few in our proposal. There was a discussion about professionals and time. Well, how much more do you want to spend? You want to spend, I mean, you already had $300,000 to clean up. Do you want to spend tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars? Do you want to do community insurance? That's fine. That's great. I love it. Revenue and debt, I mean, you have it, you have it, an entity that's costing you $200,000 to $300,000, depending on how you measure it a year. Again, I go back to plaque that. It doesn't get any clearer than that. There was a discussion about restaurants. I'm going to ask Sandy, who does foodie tours downtown Berlin. Where did, this is like Joe Moore, I think, but where do your customers come from? They did not come from the town of Berlin.
They're from tourism.
And you get those from all of your eight other foodie tours that want to come back to another foodie tour. Those are people who come to this town. Tourism doesn't get any better than that. It's the best, it's the most effective economic developer that you can get because it doesn't cost the town anything to service those people and you get revenue from them. So when we say population, we're not going to be serving food service to residents of Berlin. Just make that clear. Only, only. We will be serving to the residents of Berlin, but not exclusively. Mr. Tasio asked about use restrictions. Again, I don't know how to say this, but every time you apply, and I do this for a living. And again, I just confirm this with another professional in this audience. Every time you apply restrictions, all we've done is ask for seven years as opposed to 10-year. That's it. That's what we've asked for. We're not mandating anything. We're asking. That was all I had, basically.
Any closing remarks from the council? If the group's okay with it, we will pass some of these.
Oh, one more thing. I don't, after what Mr. Engelhardt, Dave, said, when you're a planning zoning commission, you can't have a public meeting without a plan. I don't know what the planning and zoning commission, who's already decided they're against it, whatever it is, they're against it. So it kind of concerns me where you go into a situation where somebody's opposed to something. There's not a, there's not a plan presented. There's not a presenter of the plan, but the town's against it. So it just kind of cautioned the process there.
I will say that my understanding of the mayor and council's request of the Parks Commission and of the Planning Commission, and Mary and I talked about this afterward, is to offer the opportunity for those venues for public comment. We did not say to those bodies that we wanted an action item from them. And I think that one thing that this body should think about is how long we have discussed this, how many times we've reviewed this and had the developer here. Those bodies have never had that opportunity. And to ask them to reach some point of judgment that we can use as a thermometer or a compass to navigate our way is, I think, of asking a lot.
Well, I made that a general motion and I think the intent was for them to be able to express their opinion, good or bad or against each one, if they can have that consensus. But I want to hear from those members to give us some guidance.
Well, let's refer to the minutes here. Councilmember Ner suggested that we should make a temporary pause negotiations until you're input from the planning and parks commissions. And until they have two or three additional public meetings in August.
Dave Engelhardt?
I just want to just, Mr. Dillis here, at no time did I say that the planning commission was against anything. I did not say that. I just want that clear for the record.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Tasio said that he can tell us right now what it is. But I just want to say with council's mayor's permission, if we can go to the conference room, let you get back to your rural board of business. If any citizens have any questions with us, we would like to open that door. Is that legal? Is that possible?
I'm okay with that. Sarah, do you mind accompanying them for that? Kate, can you?
I have a quick question.
Yes, just hold on one second. Kate, can you handle keeping time for public comment if we get to that point and Sarah's not?
Just real quick, I am a little, you said, you said it can't get any clearer. Well, I'm unclear. So you're saying, you're saying plaque that paid or whoever bought for $120,000 a square foot?
I'm referring to valuation, which is like on page eight of this package. I mean, when you're an appraiser...
I feel really dumb now. So go ahead, go ahead.
So I mean, I've outlined here on page eight, how to establish value, whether it's your independent, third party. Sorry?
I guess it's...
It went for $120,000 a paper. I have the SDAP sheets here, if you'd like. That was in January of 2023. It doesn't get any clearer than that. I mean, that's, that's public information, State Department of Assessments and Taxation, with no, no hair on it, if you will, no strings, if you will. I outlined that on page eight, the last item on page eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to go into the conference room and hang out.
Sarah's in there if anybody wants to continue that discussion.
There are people in there waiting for the seat, but there's staff in there as well, so I can hear you.
Well, hopefully we can kind of transition into our public meeting. It does have the opportunity for public comment once again, so we're happy to hear that. Let's reconvene. Mr. Tasio, if you'd like to just state whatever else.
Oh, I just don't want to misunderstand what you said about the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission to me. I became flattered when you said it was like, you guys have discussed this for two years. The Planning Commission and the Parks Commission hadn't discussed it at all. So how we can take any relevance from those two groups if they haven't discussed it at all? Is that how I understood what you were saying?
No, that's not the intent of what I said.
No, that's not the intent of what I said.
Okay.
What I said was, I think it's not kind of us to ask you all, the Planning Commission, the Parks Commission, to make a decision without having the time to be able to apply the same diligence.
We would love the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's reconvene in, oh, David? If you want to come forward, name and street name of the doppel or entity that you represent.
Thank you. My name is Jack Perfitch. I wasn't gonna say anything, not that I wanted to listen, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments, and, because I believe in being fair. I will say that Palmer Gillis is an excellent developer. Everything he's done, he's done first class. He does it right. I am concerned that what the dictates that you've given him to do with this piece of partial in that I think the town of Berlin is fragile. And I think it's doing really well right now. And I think if you go down there and put retail and restaurants and compete with what we have up here, that everybody's gonna fail, like a house dividing. It's not strong enough. As you see, restaurants, Boxcar, it just went out. How long has it been in business? You know, it's fragile. So if you give him things to develop that don't compete with downtown, then I think it would be a real success, like the Garden Center. Things like that, that would be good. But when you put retail, commercial and retail, I really think you're gonna really hurt downtown. And, you know, I've been downtown for 40 years, or 30 years. From '63 to '93, I worked downtown in a little store called Stop Guy, that some of you know. And so I really seen Berlin come and go. And I've seen you spend a lot of money making it what it is. And how the council has supported it, I think, has been fantastic, and made it what it is. But I don't want to see us make the mistake. And, and I'm telling you, all we have to do is look at Salisbury. Salisbury downtown when I was a young man was where everybody went. It was solid, it was strong, it was where to go. It had everything, just like Berlin. Then they went out and they went to South Salisbury Boulevard, did some things. They went out to the mall, and downtown Salisbury died. And it has never come back. I mean, they've made it now something else. It's offices, it's, it's a university, it's other things. And it's very nice, but the town is gone from what it used to be. And I honestly believe that if you do it the way it's being proposed currently, the same thing could very well happen to downtown Berlin. And that's the last thing I want to see it happen. I was born here, I was raised here, I'll die here. And I want to see the town successful and succeed. And in doing so, I think you've got to be very careful in what you put out there and what the uses. It needs to be something that complements downtown, not competes with downtown. Thank you.
Before you, before you leave, something brief aside. We just finished the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference. And I was actually with Sarah at one of our booths. And a gentleman came up and goes, have you ever, you're from the town of Berlin. Have you ever heard of Mayor Verbage? Actually, yes, I have. And then he started talking about your dad sleeping in the shop window. So we had a lot of good conversations about that.
Thank you. He loved this town, and his heart was in this town. He, he really loved, I think it was 22 or 24 years he was the mayor, until they finally kicked him out.
Thank you. Thank you. Just, in reference to Harren Park?
Yes. Glad Dayless, toward South Main Street. I am opposed to what was being presented for, for the, for the area. Councilmember Burrow, you had made a comment last month that the primary decision has to be based on, is this good for Berlin? I do not believe this is good for the town of Berlin. We've made, two different times tonight, I've heard the Kennedy quote, the rising tide flips all boats. And I firmly believe that. But just adding more boats does not cause that tide to rise. Walking over here tonight, there was no one on at the American Hotel. The last two Saturdays, we went to the Globe, walked back out, and there was no one there. And as was just stated previously, the Black Girl main is leaving. So it has to tell us. So to me, I find it hard to believe that if we put more restaurants that are not in walking distance to downtown, that that's not gonna have a detrimental effect on businesses or mainstream. It, it's become a, out there, it's, it's not walkable. So it's, it's, in and of itself, it's its own destination. Are people gonna come out and eat there and then turn around and walk into town? I'm not gonna do that. If we were, if there was a mixed use, provide some residential for young families to live there, who will walk into town, I think that's a better opportunity for the area. Several months ago, we sat in here and we listened over and over again, people, young people that had bought properties and turned them into short-term rentals, simply because they couldn't afford to live here. So there are a lot of young people who could make use of that area. They ought to walk into town, maybe work in her shops, maybe work in restaurants, and maybe one day open up their own restaurant. My son's opening up a new brewery. And so there's a lot of young people, younger families, that can make better use of the area. So I believe more to residential and/or mixed-use facility.
Thank you. All right, I think we need to get ready and move on to our regular session. We'll reconvene in about three minutes, if that's okay? Once again, I believe Coastal Ventures Properties folks are still over in the conference room, if you would like to add to that discussion.
Ron, can I ask you a question?